The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this special board meeting. We will start by taking roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Hello. Becker?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Layton Warren?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Brandon Hubel?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. We have one agenda item today, which is the recommendation from the District Health and Safety Committee to modify our existing mask policy within the Green Bay School District. There is a short slide deck attached to board docs, which board members have been able to review late last week and over the weekend. So with that said, I am going to make the recommended motion that the administration came forward with. And that is that effective June 14th, 2021, face coverings for students, staff, adult visitors, and contractors shall be, one, strongly recommended but not required on district premises; two, for district provided transportation worn in accordance with federal requirements; and three, for WIAA events, worn in accordance with WIAA requirements. And that should COVID-19 infection rates reach 1% for the district's student and staff population over five consecutive days, face coverings would be required and remain in effect until the district-wide infection rate falls below 0.2% for the district as presented be approved.
And I'm going to second it for purposes of discussion, although I'm not in full support of the motion as it reads right now.
Okay. I'll go first at being the one who made the motion. Just a quick insight into why I'm supportive of it. Very aware that this doesn't align completely with the CDC recommendation as it currently exists. However, in my decision-making process throughout this, I've certainly valued what the CDC has had to say. I've also looked at what our local experts, our local team, both from an operations and a health and safety standpoint have had to say. And so, taking those factors into consideration, looking at the low rates of spread in our community, I'm supportive, using our local sources, to say that I'm comfortable with the motion as it exists now. So just wanted to provide some insight into where I'm coming from with my support. One other thing that I would just ask from my other board members is understanding that there are some different schools of thought. I would suggest that we vote on this motion as presented. If it doesn't pass, we can perhaps come back with another motion, but given the complexities of this issue and for the sake of clarity, both with board and the general public, that we vote on this motion, and if it doesn't pass, we can consider a separate motion. So that would just be my only request.
I would agree with that.
Are there any other comments on the motion?
Yeah, I guess I have.
Go ahead.
This, when we talk about, would this be comparing on our GBAP's COVID-19 dashboard? You know, 1% is awfully high. It corresponds roughly to 1,000 in the, if you were to translate that to the county, I know it's not a one-to-one translation, but the standard metric we use is per 100,000 people. So would that be the number of people in isolation? More or less?
I'm trying to come off of mute here. So the active case rate that we're talking about is, we're looking at the number of active positive cases within the district. And so from that standpoint, it's simply looking, it's not looking at isolations or quarantines, but just looking at the number of active positive cases.
Okay, which should be pretty close to isolation because once you're not an active, I mean, you might be a couple of days one way or the other, right? But more, I'm just trying to get a comparison. So you know, that's a situation where we would be, fortunately, you know, we have a lot. Well, how many isolations do we have? Four? So four or six, I'm on just the one screen here. So the good news is there's not that many active cases. It seems a little odd that you would have to get, I mean, there's a bigger problem going on if 1%, of our, you know, we're already in pretty bad shape if we get up to 1%, because it doesn't sound like a lot. But yeah, I think there's, I think we can make moves towards, we can make certain moves towards being masked optional in certain cases. I certainly support it in some cases. I guess I'm interested, I'm interested in hearing maybe what some others have to say as well. I've always advocated balancing, you know, national experts and local thought as well. That's important. We're all getting emails, I mean, about equal numbers on both sides with strong feelings about keep masking or make it optional. So but I guess that's where I'm at.
Eric? Oh, Laura's up too.
I saw Laura Layton in first, and then we'll go to Brenda.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that I am so excited about the direction this is all going in terms of getting back to some sort of normalcy without masks. However, the the motion as written, I can't support, but I would, I'm hoping that we can discuss and come up with something should this not pass. But I can't support it as written just because of vaccinations, although I'm so eager to get back to normal as well. But I hope that, as written, I don't support it.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'm intending to make an alternative motion to do some mask removal, but I feel as if there's, you know, we have a population of students that have not had the opportunity to be vaccinated, and we've had a lot of emails from parents concerned that they signed up for summer school that thinking that there would be a mask requirement and concerned that they would have to pull their kids from summer school if there weren't. And so I'm, you know, trying to balance like Laura. I mean, I'd love to go to no mask, but currently the CDC recommends masks in schools. I'm not, anyway, I'll just leave it there, and I can explain further when I make my alternative motion if this particular motion doesn't pass.
Go ahead, Laura. Laura McCoy, did you have your hand raised? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, no.
Particular vote.
Okay. Any other comments before we vote on this motion? Go ahead, Dawn.
Yeah, I agree with Laura and Brenda. Children's of Wisconsin, and I just Googled it to make sure it hasn't changed. Children's of Wisconsin is still recommending anybody over the age of two who is unvaccinated, wear a mask.
Okay, any other comment?
I guess I will chime in, and I probably should, you know, say that I do agree with Brenda on this, on her position on this. So, yeah, I won't be voting for this version, but I'm hoping we can find a different version that we can all agree on.
Okay.
I'll just add, if there are some things, if, you know, with this, this appears that it's not likely to pass, there's things that are problematic enough for me with the gating criteria that it would have to be amended and fixed. I think for it to be, to make more, to make more sense for, to work better, since I think it's unlikely to pass, I won't worry about that for now, and we'll just take a look at what's in proposal and alternative motion instead.
All right, fair enough then. Unless I hear from anyone else, Beth, I think we're ready to take the vote on the motion as presented.
Online voting has been open.
Beth, because I'm taking the meeting from my phone, please mark me down as a yes.
Thank you.
And Beth, I'm having trouble logging in. I will for the next vote, but put me down as a no.
Thank you.
I'm a no as well. I'm linked in from the invitation, so I'm not logged in.
Thank you. Nancy, would you like me to record your vote for you? Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy, you're unmuted. Nancy, I'm sorry, you're still muted.
It should be the bottom left of your computer, Nancy, if you put your cursor over it.
I'm muted too. Would it be all right if she put it in the chat, Melissa?
I was just gonna suggest that Nancy could put it in the chat.
I think she just went for technical assistance.
Okay.
Here she comes.
No.
Nancy, you could just put it in the chat, and then Beth could read it out loud if that's easier.
And Beth, I just voted incorrectly on the login, so just ignore. I'm still a no vote.
Maybe Nancy could just write it on a piece of paper and hold it up. That might be easiest.
All right. That's good, Nancy. Thank you.
Okay.
That has to be the oddest vote you've ever taken. All the way around all seven of them.
So all votes have been entered. The motion did not carry. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel, yes. Smith, no. Becker, no. Warren, no. McCoy, no. Layton Warren, no. Welch, no.
All right, motion fails 6 to 1. Brenda, you had mentioned that you have an alternative motion. I guess I would yield the floor to you to make.
Okay, and I did email this to Beth, so I don't know, Beth, if you want to, it's long, so if you want to put that on the screen. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. I move that effective June 14th, 2021, face coverings for students, staff, visitors, and contractors shall be, one, optional when outside; two, required for grades K through eight when inside district buildings; three, strongly recommended but not required on district premises for all individuals and buildings for grades nine through 16; four, required in buildings that include elementary and/or middle and high school grades; five, for district provided transportation, worn in accordance with federal requirements; and six, for WIAA events, worn in accordance with WIAA requirements. And that should COVID-19 infection rates reach 1% for the district's student and staff population over five consecutive days, face coverings would be required and remain in effect until the district's student and staff population infection rate falls below 0.2%. And that if the CDC alters their recommendation of requiring masks in schools and the district infection rate is below 1%, mask requirements will be lifted in accordance with the revised CDC recommendations as presented be approved.
I'll second.
All right. Did you get that second, Beth? They turned to at the same time.
I did. I put down Smith. Is that correct?
Okay.
And please let me know when you'd like me to stop sharing my screen.
Brenda, can I ask a question quick?
Yes.
Number four, required in buildings that include elementary and/or middle and high school. Do we have buildings that would include elementary, middle, and high school?
Yeah, Monoka.
Oh, yes, yes.
Minoka, and Dewey were the three, I think. I don't know if there's more than that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on that same point. As it reads, and/or, it makes, if it was or, it would say elementary or middle school and high school. And I think the point is if they're middle or high school together, or if there's a high school in with an elementary or middle, then those high schoolers would be required masks. I don't know if that reads correctly.
So you're asking?
I just wonder if it should just be elementary and middle school or high school instead of or. Because if it said or,
My only concern with that, Eric, is John Dewey and NEW don't have elementary. So then if you write it elementary and middle and high school, then
Oh, I see. Okay, yep. That makes sense.
And/or.
Yep, yep. Okay, that makes sense. So Brenda, I'll give you an opportunity to speak to the motion, and then Dawn, I'll go to you as the person who seconded it if you'd like to say anything.
Yeah, like I said, you know, I'm concerned that we have, all of our elementary students have not had an opportunity to be vaccinated. Some of middle have, but not for very long. And if you look at the numbers of vaccinated kids, and you know, sort of reflects that in terms of the percentages, and also, when we have K-8 schools, it makes it easier for the K-8 school to have one one rule that they're working under. And I think that it's, I mean, this is an evolving, changing situation. I mean, I know I put in the CDC requirement that we would follow that, but I would also offer that if, you know, in a month, we start looking at things and the the data are coming back, looking different, or, you know, vaccinations have been, are being provided to a new age group, you know, all those kinds of things, I wouldn't be opposed to having, you know, another consideration in a, you know, month to six weeks from now. But at this point, I feel like if we, the CDC requirement, if they lift that, then this allows our district administration to immediately move to changing the mask recommendations. You know, obviously, if we're gonna change them, if we want to change them in the future, and we're changing it to be something different from the CDC, then we would have to have another meeting.
Dawn, anything that you want to add?
No, I like the motion. I like, Brenda, that you included the part about the CDC just to allow the, to allow the district to be agile as those rules change, that they aren't waiting for us to all be able to come together and vote on that should the CDC lift their recommendations around masking for unvaccinated. And I agree. I mean, once, if the vaccine becomes available for younger age groups, then we meet again and we talk about that.
Okay. So I know this is a little bit hypothetical, but what I'm hearing is that if the CDC changes their recommendations, that we would get back together and potentially look at changing our policy again to stay in accordance with whatever new CDC policies would come down for guidance?
No, my motion is intended to say we don't have to meet again if the CDC is changing the recommendations and, you know, that we would follow that CDC recommendation. I mean, I think that allows the administration to start the next day to, you know, modify whatever we think. I mean, if there's something that's confusing and complicated and and administration has questions about which direction we want to go, then, you know, obviously, they could call another meeting. But if it's as simple as the CDC lifts the requirement for masks in schools, then this allows our administration to just do that without us having to meet.
Sure. Correct me if I'm wrong, we would still, like, we would still have to modify the board policy. I mean, I don't think you can write a policy that would just sunset based upon CDC action unless, Melissa, perhaps I'm wrong. I appreciate that clarification and that that step. I just want to know if we would have to meet again or not.
The way that Brenda has written her motion, if the CDC's guidelines are revised with respect to children in pre-K through eight, you would not need to meet again, and you would, this motion essentially adapts what the CDC would revise.
Okay. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so, number four, as written, and we have to go by the written, not the intent, buildings that include elementary and/or middle or high school grades, that's all buildings. So I think that, I think that needs to be, I understand what the intent is, but as it's written, it's all buildings. Right? Elementary and/or middle or
Oh, because it has the and in there for the high school. So
Maybe we just need two clauses, elementary and middle, or middle and high? Or three clauses?
You only
Or elementary, middle, and high?
Elementary, middle, high, middle, and high. If you want to write it that way.
However, and that is, that is an issue, but I actually, given where, you know, for me, an important part of this is who is, you know, who is eligible to have the choice to be vaccinated, and that's people 12, it's readily available for those who choose it, for people 12 and older right now. So rather than, rather than require it PK through eight, I would like to offer an amendment to make it PK through six. And I'd like to see where masks would be required, PK through six, and see where that goes before we would look at, because that might impact how you would word the other parts. So I moved to amend the motion by changing PK through eight to PK through six.
Is there a second? I would second that motion. So is there any feedback before we just? Go ahead, Brenda.
My concern with that is, I think I'd like Steve and anybody else to weigh in. My concern with that is when you have it mixed in a school, there may be times when, in a middle school, when sixth and seventh graders are combining. Also, I guess my concern is just the short window that the 12 years and up for vaccination. I know, yeah, I mean, it just feels like there's gonna be some potential complications with administrators trying to make that happen if it's mixed like that.
So I'd offer that, again, in our buildings where we've got multi-grade levels in there, the challenge would be that you could easily have students in proximity who are masked and unmasked, staff who are masked and unmasked, and that might present some administrative challenges. I think the other thing is we know that our high school students have been through the two plus two, the two shots, plus the two weeks afterwards, so that we know that they have reached that immunity stage. Many of our middle school children, just because of the timing of the offering of the vaccine, have not been through the two plus two yet. So that might be another concern that's out there.
All right. Can we just vote? Oh, I'm sorry, Laura Layton? Yep, go ahead.
Well, it's Laura McCoy.
Oh, okay. I think they both, I think you both had your hand up. So we'll go Laura McCoy then Laura Layton.
You know, I was wondering about something. If, how does this, how do other areas in our district, how would they be affected by this, areas that don't necessarily have children in them, like DOB or any other facilities?
Yeah, we, we're looking primarily right now at those areas where students will be present this summer. And then after the board takes action, then we'll look at areas like the auxiliary services building, the district, the DOB here, and determine whether or not we need to make adjustments for those buildings that are primarily adult staff only.
Okay. But that won't require board action?
I don't believe so, as that's a working condition format and not necessarily related to students and their presence with adults in instructional environments.
Okay.
Go ahead, Laura Layton.
Sure. My only other thought in response to what Andrew had proposed is that I believe there could be seventh graders who are 11 years old that would not be eligible for the vaccine. And so I'm not sure what amount of population that is, but if we're really gonna make decisions along those lines, that would be another reason to consider ensuring that that there are masks for those students as well.
And Andrew, I'll just add, as the person who seconded the motion, I mean, obviously, I wasn't supportive of the first one. But given the information from Steve around the operations, I'd vote no to that amendment for those reasons. All right. Let's take a vote on Andrew's amendment, which was adjusting pre-K eight to pre-K six. Beth, do you think it would just be easier to take a voice vote? Or do you want to open it up for those who can?
Whatever you think, Eric.
Let's just do a voice vote.
So the motion is to move to amend the motion to read mask required for PK through six instead of PK through eight. Brandon Hubel?
No.
Smith?
No.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
No.
McCoy?
No.
Layton Warren?
No.
Welch?
No.
Okay. All votes have been entered. The motion did not carry.
All right, I believe it failed 6 to 1. So we are back to the original motion made by Brenda. Any other comments on that motion?
So could we, if we're gonna say the mixed, when we're trying to talk about mixed buildings, could we, could we talk about, is the intent to say where elementary and secondary are mixed within a building? Is that, does that resolve it?
Not just elementary, though. So it should, because secondary is middle and high school. And the motion says that pre-K through eight must mask. So my understanding is where, for example, J-Doll and NEW, where there's middle school and high school, Brenda would like that particular building, then, because there are middle school kids who have to mask, the high school kids would also need to mask. And Monoka is elementary, middle, and high.
That's what I was thinking. We might need two clauses, elementary and middle, or middle and high, so that you can see where those two overlap.
Are we just saying buildings that, buildings that include Are we just saying buildings that, buildings that include middle and or high school would have to mask, that's Brenda's intent?
I believe that's the case.
It could have middle, high, middle and high, regardless of elementary. Is that right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's, so that the staff and students at Menoka know that it applies to them if you're gonna word it middle and high.
Because it, well, Menoka includes middle and high.
Yes.
And J-Doll includes middle.
And high, yep.
Does this properly cover any situations of mixed classes then? Do we have, like, do we have any weird situations where because of how summer school is configured, there might be a small component of, you know, there might be one small meeting of a class section in a building where we needed, where we had extra room that would switch it for the whole school? I just don't know our summer school configurations. I don't know all of our summer school configurations, so. Are most summer school classes either in, are, are most of them in elementaries and elementary buildings, secondaries and secondary buildings, unless it's, they're homed in a K-8 building?
Yes, that's correct Andrew.
All right, are we, I mean, we're gonna wordsmith here, I mean, I think. Go ahead Brenda.
I was just gonna say, did you see the chat from Laura? Layton and Warren?
I did not.
Okay, actually, she has her hand up, so.
Go ahead Laura.
My question was, could we just change the, the word and to with and have that work? So it's saying elementary with middle school and schools with, I'm sorry, I don't see the motion up, but to have, to make that change and have it work?
So required in buildings that include elementary with middle and middle with high?
No, I think that could say and or, and then the second and change that to with. So it's basically saying if there is elementary or middle school students in any scenario in the district where they're with high school students, then the high school students would also be required to mask. I think that's the intent of what we're trying to get to.
That looks good.
And that, that seems to make sense with, to me.
Nice job.
Laura Layton? Yeah, thank you for that suggestion, because I felt like we were muddled in, we all understood, but we couldn't make it say what we wanted. Uh, is there unanimous consent?
Probably asked unanimously, or you were just about to do that, sorry.
Yep, is there unanimous consent to change and to with? Any opposition there? Okay. All right, then we've got the motion there, any other comments before we take the vote?
I think it's, I think it's a reasonable, I think it's a reasonable middle ground. I've had people asking me about some age limit and stuff, I would have preferred six, the rest of the board didn't like six. I got a lot of, I, I was surprised by how much feedback I got that was, it wasn't a ton, but I got some middle of the road feedback, where during this whole COVID discussion, I haven't necessarily gotten a lot of middle of the road, any middle of the road feedback of can you find an approach where knowing that those who choose to take the vaccine can take the vaccine down to age 12, can we work with that? And I think this is an attempt to do that there, I also, I also think this is good that it makes it very clear that there will be a change if the CDC changes, and if, if we do have families who are only comfortable with a situation where they are 100% certain masking would be all the way through summer school, then they probably should not choose in-person summer school for that reason, because there is a reasonable chance that the CDC could change. But I think this is spilling out exactly where we're coming from and I support the compromise motion.
All right. Anyone else?
I would agree with Andrew that our feedback has been kind of, not muted, that's not the right word, but pretty reasonable and, and lots of people wanting to seek common ground. And I have been, you know, just, you know, answering as many of those emails as possible with, you know, just gratitude basically, that people have been reaching out with their, their concerns, but, you know, I think that what we're voting on right now is, is a good, is a good middle, kind of a good compromise and I will be able to vote in favor of it.
Go ahead Laura Layton, Warren.
I just wanted to thank administration for coming forward with this, and I, I can't imagine, you know, being relatively new to the board, the amount of information and emails. So I appreciate the effort and work that's gone into, into listening to everyone, taking all the information into account and coming up with this recommendation. Also, I appreciate and want to encourage parents to continue to email and message, we had a variety of, of perspectives, but agreed with Laura that there's a lot of middle ground. I mean, you can see that, that people just care about our, our district and wanting to get back to learning and some normalcy, and so I really appreciate everyone's effort in this, and I feel good about what we've discussed here, so I appreciate that from all of you in the community as well.
All right, any last comments? All right, seeing none Beth, I think we're ready to vote, if we could do another voice vote please.
Sounds great. Smith?
Aye.
Banden Hubel?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Layton and Warren?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, motion passes seven zero, as that is our only agenda item, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Did you get that Beth? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? All right, and that adjourns the special board meeting, thanks everyone, have a good rest of your day.
Thank you all.
I know.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school districts website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.